Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this work session for May 6, 2025 to order. If you can please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the state flag.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great and just and just world. Salute the flag of the United States of America, the seizable, perfect, friendship, without giving any cost.
Next item will be approval of the work session agenda.
So move.
Second.
Job motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Flores. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item will be public input. And during this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda, and the request forms are in the county manager's office. Do we have anyone for public speaking?
Thank you so much for your service to our community. Really appreciate it. It's a little different to be on the side of the mic. I'm here today to ask the Commission to look into the multitude of community concerns about HMS, and to ask that the HMS Board take the county's questions seriously for the good of the community. Since the Commission has no authority over HMS, I will provide some context for why I think my request is appropriate. HMS is a federally qualified health clinic organized as a 501(c)(3) public charity, meaning the organization is primarily funded by public dollars. The Board of a 501(c)(3) hires and holds the CEO accountable and serves as the fiduciaries of the organization, ensuring the prudent use of all assets in service to the mission. As the Grant County Board of Commissioners, although you are elected officials, you serve in a similar role. The Commission hires the county manager, holds them accountable, and is responsible for the budget and policies that ensure the health, welfare, and safety of county residents. Both entities are publicly funded and accountable to the public they serve. So how are these two things connected? The Board of Commissioners must make sound economic and strategic decisions that ensure the county has enough financial and human resources to meet the health, safety, and welfare needs of the community. The HMS Board must do the same, ensure that the organization has enough financial and human resources to meet the healthcare needs of their patients. Ideally, this is a mutually beneficial strategic partnership. The county needs HMS to provide healthcare to residents. HMS needs county services to help attract the talent they need to provide the healthcare. An example would be the county prioritizing capital outlay to provide high-quality facilities that help HMS attract human resources. Together, they provide the economic growth that both organizations need to meet the needs of their constituents. Another example is using the Commission's legislative agenda to further the HMS mission. This is obviously oversimplified, but hopefully makes as much sense as it can in five minutes or less. The critical importance of HMS to county residents offers the Commission an opportunity to ask some tough questions of the HMS Board related to recent events. Questions like, why did both the Chief Medical Officer and the Chief Mental Health Officer resign very recently? Why is staff turnover so high? Why did HMS lose $340,000 on senior services last year? What is the status of 14-day care at Tucasa? Why haven't mobile crisis services been implemented? As we have learned from our experience with the hospital, healthcare is very fragile, especially in rural communities. It is also extremely complex, and the answers to the questions may be more complex than we're prepared for. But the services HMS provides, from case management to home-delivered meals to serious mental health issues and basic primary care, are absolutely vital to the health and well-being of our county residents, and in turn, the county itself. Therefore, the most important question that must be asked is HMS organizationally capable of delivering vital services, and if not, why not? Is it legislative, administrative, underfunding, overcommitted, ineffective state bureaucracy, some combination of all of the above, and maybe even things we don't know about yet? I can't imagine the county or any of the municipalities have hundreds of thousands of dollars laying around to pick up much-needed programs. So the critical question is, why are these issues happening, and what can be done to fix it? That's it. Thank you. I appreciate your attention to this matter.
Do we have anyone else for public speaking? Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda, be a presentations, status update on courthouse drawing. Mr. Joseph Holguin.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Manager of Work. Just wanted to give a thank you for the opportunity to share this project today. We wanted to take this opportunity to provide a little bit of a project update on that courthouse renovation project slash new construction. So, of course, with our three new Commissioners, we saw this as a good opportunity to kind of bring you guys up to speed, let you know the two different approaches we're taking. And so with that, I'm going to hand it over to Tom Wilber and Robert Calvani with NCA Architects, and they're going to go over those drawings, and we're happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you, Joseph. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. I'm Bob Calvani. I'm with NCA Architects, and this is Tom Wilber. As Joseph said, we've been working on this project for some time, and we've been looking at the assessment of the courthouse. We've been working with the county staff, and we've been working with the judge and the courts, and basically looking at two different projects. One, the remodel of the existing courthouse, and also a brand-new courthouse. So let me see if I can advance this. So basically, as I said, there's two different projects. We're looking at both of them, and the end product is to determine which one you want to go with, and by this, we'll give you plans and we'll give you estimates about which each project would take and the time that it would take to do it. As I said, the existing courthouse is a renovation and an addition. It only includes the first and second levels, not the third level nor the basement. It has a small addition that takes care of some needs to the west. The renovation includes, as we say, if there are ADA upgrades, IBC code, mechanical electrical, plumbing, and fire protection. And we're doing site modifications to make sure we have secure staff parking and access. The thing about courthouses that you need to remember is that there are, it's a separation of circulation. And you basically have three different people. You have the public, you have the judges, and you have the inmates. So all of those various entities need to be separated from one another. You don't want the judge running into an inmate, you don't want an inmate running into the public and vice versa. So the big issue about courthouses is those separations and how you deal with that pedestrian circulation and those separations. Obviously, doing an existing courthouse, it has its issues, but it's a great building. And it's harder to make those separations happen in an existing courthouse. It's harder to make all the needs that the court needs in an existing courthouse, but we think we can do that. I want to state that the programs are the same, whether it's in the existing courthouse or the new courthouse, the program or the needs of the courts is the same, whether two hearing rooms, two courtrooms, et cetera. In the new district courthouse, it would be on the side of the existing jail. We would provide Grant County with design development drawings, like we said, of each scheme. We'll provide the estimates. We plan to be finished with this by September, and the final presentation is due on October. So again, we have two different schemes, and so I'd like Tom to present both schemes to you now, the one of the renovation and then following the new courthouse.
The first scheme we're going to take a look at is, will be the existing courthouse renovation and addition. This is, includes approximately 18,000 square feet of renovation inside the building, and I'm sorry, about 14,000 inside, and about a 4,000-square-foot addition for entry and This is a current site plan of the, for the district courthouse. On the far right, you'll see the courthouse, just above that is magistrate, and to the left of that is the existing detention center. Below the detention center is a public parking that's existing, and then we're looking at, on the site plan of bringing the public in on Black Street, to the very bottom of the page, where the red dot is would be where the inmate sallyport goes in, and then they would use the existing parking, as you see it today, would stay pretty much the same. The public entry would be flipped, well, not flipped, it's there now, but would be increased in size a little bit to handle the, a better security entry and queuing line, as well as be focused onto that parking area. The staff entry, which is the green dot, is towards the center of the existing building, but everything to, above that green dot is staff parking, which would be walled in and would be secured, with a gate entry off of West Yankee using North Black Street. The first-level floor plan, the yellow color that you see is public circulation. The kind of pinkish color that you can kind of see is inmate, and the blue, the blue color is the staff or the district court on the first floor. What we're looking at during the, where the yellow dot is, is the public entry, and the public parking would be above that. The red dot for inmate, that is a sallyport, and then you can see the green dot for the staff entry. There would be a site wall protecting that entry from accessibility by the public. So the public would come in where the yellow dot is through a entry into the security area where there'd be area for queuing, as it moves through the magnometers and bag detection, and then as it comes through that point, you come into the public lobby where that's where the existing elevator is. We'd be using the existing elevator as our means of transportation for the public. The entire corridor then of the existing building would have public accessibility, and we'll, I'll kind of go into a little bit on some security items in there. Off to the right of the elevator would be a new core for disabled toilet rooms. The current toilet rooms don't meet ADA, but we can use them as part of our toilet count, provided we do provide accessible toilets somewhere on that level. So this gains all those toilets together. The main stair in the first level would be for the public use to the second level. Excuse me. So what we did with the program here originally on the, to the right of the screen was where the two hearing rooms were, or they are today. What we're proposing to do is actually flip those two hearing rooms to the left side. That gives them direct access to the new holding area, so inmates can be brought into the two hearing rooms off of the first level through a secure corridor with no cross-circulation between staff or public. Of course, the clerk is on the left side, so we're going to propose to flip the clerk back to the right side, where the, where the hearing room is currently located, and the pre-trial would be located in that area as well, along with some other offices for the judicial support. When you look at these old buildings like this, one of the things you have to be really careful with is the structure of the building. Sometimes they don't, the columns don't always follow the same grid, and you have to look at window placement. We can't really, because of historic value, we can't be tearing windows out of the main facade and moving them around because they just don't really like you to do that, so we're trying not to touch that, keep that intact. And so what you end up with are, what we ended up in the concept on this one are little suites of space that are between structure, can accommodate the window pattern in the existing building, get the spaces inside, and then secure the suite from the public corridor. The secure door or access into each suite would be by badge, card reader, something like that. But you can secure the staff down into their suite so that the public cannot just wander into these new office spaces. So each block you see in blue has an access point that would be secured, a suite, and then a series of offices inside each suite. So next to the hearing, there's a, the hearing judge adjacent to that, or probation, drug court, things like that, that might have more of an access immediately off of the public lobby, as well as a conference area that could be accessed from the public lobby and from the secured suite. On the other side of that particular block is Hall of Finance, that includes their storage, three finance offices, they're all enclosed into a suite. Above that is more common support thing, items for the staff, break rooms, IT, things like that. And then to the far right is the clerk, court support offices, and pre-trial. So on the second floor, you can see where the inmate, the new inmate holding is. This is a primary holding area. It has, would contain two large group holding cells and two smaller holding cells, along with a detention toilet, security guard, and of course, they also get their own elevator. They also get attorney visitation, so you can bring an inmate in, keep them into the holding area, but they can meet with their attorney who could come in from the public side. The courtroom on the left is untouched, other than that we have, can bring inmates into that courtroom through that new addition. The yellow, again, is public circulation. This would have a new public toilet right adjacent to the existing elevator. On the bottom, below the, the public corridor, you have the judges' chambers, a deliberation room, evidence, and then another judge chamber. So they're all in that bottom blue piece. Above that is the attorney suite, which has law offices, and then adjacent to that is a second existing district court. We do have to modify that one a little bit because we have to be able to provide some means of accessibility to the existing stair. So what we're doing there is, on one side of the corridor is a access to the stair. It creates a sound vestibule into the existing district courthouse, which is, will improve that courthouse a little bit. And then on the bottom of that corridor is a judge access through a secure corridor into that, into that courtroom. I'll run through the, excuse me, run through the new building. Of course, the nice thing here is we're not dealing with some of those problems, the historic issues, the ADA issues, columns, large concrete columns in the middle of nowhere, things like that, windows, we can put them wherever we want. Things are a little, a little easier to deal with here. We could control the security issues that Bob was talking about a little bit better here by completely separating the staff from the inmates, from the, from the public. So in this scheme, you can see the district courthouse is again off of Black Street towards the bottom of the page. Above that is the existing magistrate, and then to the left of those two buildings, we would propose to demolish the detention facility, and that would be the location of the new courthouse facility. The public would still access the parking area from Black Street, but we did rearrange that parking lot a little bit to better accommodate the new construction, as well as to try to attempt to maintain sensitive entry points into each of these other buildings on this site. So it's really not a one-building site, it's kind of a campus site if you want to look at it that way. So all of the public parking could occur where it's shown in this site plan, and they would have access to all three of these buildings off of that site, off of that parking area. In order to tie it all together, to the right of the new building, we thought it might be interesting to maybe look at Public Plaza, something that was specific to the city or the county, that shows a little bit, that creates a connection point for the three buildings as well as a community space. So where the yellow dot is on this plan is a public entry off of the public parking area. The red dot at the top is the inmate entry into the sallyport. Right to the left of that red dot is the gate into the staff parking, which is again walled in by, for security. So the staff and the judges are completely secure inside the parking area, and then within that area, where the green dot is shown, is where the staff would come into the, into the facility. The, I'm going to try to explain this on this sheet. The staff entry, where the staff entry is shown is the highest part of the site. One of the things we're going to try to take advantage of with the topography of the site is if we use that baseline as the finished floor of the first floor, as the slight slopes away from, to the right, we almost get enough height to get a, the sallyport underneath the first level, and that's really where you want it for maximum security. You're not really creating a basement, but you, you are using the site as a site comes down. This way, the floor comes across, we have an opening on the, on the far side of the building to get a sallyport into the facility below first level. And the reason I want to explain that is because the next drawing's a little weird. It just shows this little thing here, and I'll explain this as I move through. The red dot that you saw on the site plan is the access point. This is just what we would call the basement level. They come, the, the, the holding van would come in, they would unload, they would come down this corridor where there's an elevator, where the red dot is, and that elevator is for inmate use only, and then that elevator takes the inmates up to the first floor in a centralized holding center, which I'll show you here where the red dot is. The dark blue outline indicates where that basement was located in the previous drawing. So what we're doing is we're bringing them from the outside and then bringing them up into the core, the center of the building, and that, that allows the circulation patterns of the public and the staff to not be interrupted by circulation of the inmate. All of the inmate circulation now is vertical. So in that holding area where the red dot is, you would have your main holding cells, and then those holding cells access directly into the two hearing rooms on either side of the holding cell. Where the yellow dot is, that's the public entry off of the parking lot. They come into a, into a secure vestibule, they go through the same security process, the bag search, magnometers, and then they, that opens up into the public lobby where they have access to the public stair and the public elevator, both of which are also visually accessible to the security guard at the front, which is important in the, in the layout of the security for that first level. To the left of the public lobby, the public can access the clerk, the court clerk, and the pre-trial, and then to the right of that public lobby, they can move down the corridor to access the public entry into the hearing rooms. Where the green dot's shown at the top, that's a staff entry. They come in from the secure staff parking, and they have a circulation corridor going down the, straight down the back to access the court support offices, pre-trial, district court clerk, file, evidence file, and all of those things that we want to keep on that side of the, of the circulation pattern. In the public lobby, there are also the public toilets, and then the staff would have their own secure toilet rooms. Now, if you want to keep your eye on the red dot, it just moved up. One more level and through that secure core, this is a second level. The holding area is directly above the one below it, the elevator comes up, you have some holding cells, and then you can take the inmates directly into the two district courtrooms on either side of it. The public comes up the elevator, the stair, into the second-level public lobby, and the only access they have now to the, in this facility is to go down the corridor that accesses the public side of the courtrooms. On the backside, in the secure staff side, you have the judges' chambers, deliberation rooms, you have a financial office suite, and then some support offices for the lawyers and bailiff. And the toilet rooms just come up as well, just stack themselves up in a vertical core. We have a couple of preliminary elevations for the new building that we're looking at. The top one is looking from Yankee Street. In the background, you can see the existing district courthouse. We're looking, we definitely want to respect that building on this site. We don't want to overwhelm that building, but we do want to create a courthouse that has its own identity. In this case, you're looking on the, at the judge and staff-side entry. The wall, you can kind of see the slope of the site as we were talking about, about how the floor comes out, create, puts the building on a podium, and more or less so that we can get the holding underneath it. But that podium also kind of gives it a little bit more of a federal feel, a more community, the importance of the community building. The wall, we're looking at potentially bringing in like a stone veneer that might match some of the stones you see locally around Silver City, and we're looking as well as utilizing a brick on the new, the new building, a brick veneer that would look similar to the existing district courthouse. Couple of reasons, not only are these materials kind of regional, which we feel is important, they also give you the greatest durability for the least maintenance. They might cost a little bit more in the front, but they're going to go longer in the, in the long haul of the lifespan of the building. The bottom elevation of, is the, looking at the public side, it has a kind of a formalized colonnade before you get into the building to, more or less to mark that as the entry point, but it too would be mainly brick with a brick veneer with a stone veneer. But it too would be mainly brick with a brick veneer with a stone veneer accent in the walls. We're also looking at utilizing, bringing in a metal roof over the courtrooms, that give the courtrooms a little bit more height than the, for the, for the size of the room itself, as well as it kind of gives, I think gives it a little bit more of a Silver City So with that, I would like to open it up to questions and answers.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you for the presentation. I, I guess one question would be about cost, and then the second question would be if there's been prior discussion before I came on board about if you did the renovation plan, what would happen to the old detention facility? And if you did the new building plan, what would happen to the existing courthouse? Or what it would be used for?
Cost is definitely, that's, it's part of our scope. I'm not going to try to dodge the question yet. But cost, we're definitely going to give you a cost estimate for each scheme, and we think that's, of course, part of the decision, that's going to help you make a decision on which way to go. I, at this point, don't want to necessarily say a renovation is absolutely that much cheaper when you get into these types of renovations than a new, a new building, where, of course, obviously you don't have foundation and structure to worry about. But you do have other things to worry about in renovations, like what does a courtroom, what's, what do the courts do while we're, while we're renovating? Is there a cost to that? That, do you have to have temporary facilities? Or if you're bringing a contractor on and off of the job based on your court schedules, you're going to lengthen the time and lengthen that construction, or increase that cost? The second part of it is that, that I could say probably you're looking at around 800 square foot for a new building, as a kind of a generalized guess. What the construction costs will be when we do your estimate in August may be different. And that's why I don't want to pin a number down right now. There's a lot of activities going on in the economy of the construction industry right now. That could change that number between now and then, but right now, I'd look at around $800 a foot.
Yeah, part of our, part of our scope is to do 50% design development drawings. And when we do that, it's not, it's not just architectural. So we are hiring a structural engineer, mechanical engineer, electrical engineer, and those drawings will be part of the drawings that we give to an outside estimator. So the idea is to have as much information, and that's kind of why the county hired us to go this far into 50% DDs, is to give enough information so that we get a really firm estimate from this outside estimator. So like I said, part of all the drawings will be electrical, mechanical, and structural for both projects. And so, yeah, I, I think what architects do a lot is they make tools, and the tools are the drawings and then the assessment, so that you can make a logical and rational decision. And that's what we'll do. We'll give you these tools so that you'll make the decision based upon, on cost and function. I mean, obviously, you're going to function much better in a newer facility than you were in an older facility, but the old facility has this kind of sentimental value to the community and so forth. One of your questions was, what do you do with that building if you move the court? Well, that would be, we could certainly help you with that. I don't know the answer to that. That would be something you guys would have to come up with, but it's a great building. You don't want to leave it vacant, and so, yeah, you'd need to provide spaces in there, which I'm sure you could find.
So Commissioner Stevens, that's been like, you know, one of the comments I would say, well, because of the historic value, we can't change it. Well, I'm glad you can't, because I want that, that building to me, I was born and raised there, that is Grant County. That building, whether it's left vacant for a while and used for something else, needs to keep the appearance that it has in my eyes, in my opinion. So, and the uses, I don't know what, if you, if the commission decides to go on a new building, I don't know what county manager will come up with and you guys, but, you know, my biggest thing is the preservation of that old building, because that's historic and that's Grant County. I do have a little problem here with putting a metal roof on a new building next to our historic building, but, you know, that, that's not, I'm not the architect, I'm not, I'm not that piece, but do you have any other questions? Because I have a couple. You know, and to me, the other piece that flies into this, and I don't need an answer right now, but I need to eventually, is how many jury trials do we actually have in Grant County? I'm not saying set one up, and then there's a plea deal done before the jury trial. You know, if you can help me with that, Charlie, and get the answers down the road. How many jury trials do we have? How many civil trials? I mean, we talk about security, civil, civil, people are mad at each other, that's why they sue each other. Those are the questions that are really needed, probably not today, but to look at is because I've noticed six holding cells, I notice, you know, I understand you're going to have some inmates that are going to be witnesses, you have to separate them, keep them housed, but I think that our jail director also can manage some of that without putting so many holding cells in there. The other piece to this is, has our detention, our director for the detention center hasn't been involved in these plans? You know, there's a lot we need to look at, but my biggest thing is this historic value that that courthouse holds. That is, when you come in from this side of town, wherever, this side of town, you go on through that intersection, what stands out the most to the people and to the downtown people is this building. So those are the things that, that I want to make sure, as long as I'm a commissioner, is that that building keeps its historic value and the outside appearance stays the way it is. But if I can get those answers, county manager, and jury trials and so forth actually happening, that would help me a lot with my decision is to renovate or on you. And how many judges do we have assigned to this district?
And Chairman and County Commission, we certainly keep track of that information, can get, make it available to the county manager, absolutely. One thing I did, want to make sure everybody is aware that the third floor is occupied currently by the District Attorney's Office, and to the north of the building is the Silver City Magistrate Court, which I think was designed and built as a temporary solution for that court, it's very busy. And there's a couple of options with those two entities as part of a judicial campus to, to help occupy the building. And the benefit to the county, obviously, is if the magistrate court occupies some or all of the courthouses, they pay rent, the judiciary would pay rent to the county for that facility. We really appreciate the work, the architects and the commitment of the county for the newer commissioners. Judiciary was able to partner and split the cost of these plans in order to come up with, to get all the information in front of the County Commission in order to make a decision. Obviously, nobody wanted to make a decision upfront, not knowing cost, not knowing plans for the existing jail, as you asked with the renovation, what, what's going to happen with that, and what's going to happen with the existing building if there is a new build, and seeing the whole thing. And we wanted this opportunity to come a little early, like we said, October, August, September, sometime like that, before the plans are done, all the way to that completion point. We wanted to begin the conversation because the commission has so many new members, so you understand all the issues of where we're coming from, and we appreciate Joseph and working with him and, and the architect. I think we have pretty regular meetings, we, he represents the county's interests and understands all of the moving parts, and it's been a good working group so far. But thank you.
Commissioner Sheldon.
I, I just had one question on the option to build new where the detention center is now. What's the, does that create a need to replace that center temporarily or permanently while, while you're?
Correct me if, I believe that building is vacant.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
That is it?
That it?
Yes, Commissioner, thank you for, for your time.
That, and like I say, any other questions we have, we're glad to answer those. Feel free to email me, message me, be glad to work with the manager web to make sure anything you have is answered.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item, be our director reports. First one's our airport director, Ms. Rebecca.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Just a quick update. For our current projects, we're currently advertising for our LED conversion, our taxiway lighting and conversion of our runway lights. We had a pre-bid meeting with possible contractors on the 30th. Happy to report that we actually had four different contractors show up, that's unusual for us, and our bids are due on the 15th, so we'll see where that goes. For training, Roger Groves and Lauren Gonzalez were supposed to be, keep going, were supposed to go to DFW. Unfortunately, when they were dragged in there, there was a accident on I-10 that closed the interstate, and they missed their flight, so I'm working to reschedule that. We have to have that training done this month. And then finally, for our briefing, the FAA conducted its annual inspection on April 15th through 17th. This is to make sure that we are operating in compliance with Part 139, which is commercial service regulations. And they come in, they do day inspections, night inspections, look at all of our records, all of our training, how we're running our fuel farm, our RFP program, and I'm really happy to say that we had zero discrepancies. So that was fantastic. So stand for any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Rebecca, is that, in preview, how often do they do the inspection?
We have them once a year.
Once a year?
Yeah.
And is this common to have zero discrepancies?
In the eight years I've been here, we've had one other inspection that had zero discrepancies.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you, yeah. It was really good work on part of our crew.
We're good, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm the manager web. Give you some quick updates on the projects I've been working on, the current, some of the current projects, the hazard mitigation plan. Finally got a, we finally got the approval from the state yesterday, finally got an email, they reviewed the plan. They have some minor corrections, revisions they want done to it, and then they said it'd be pretty easy to complete, and at that point, it's, it'll be going to FEMA for final approval. So that was some good news yesterday. Going down to the generator project, again, yesterday I did get approval from the state on the RFP that I submitted to them, our draft version of it. I felt it was better to get their approval first, since it has to have their final approval before we move forward. So they reviewed the draft I sent to them, and it was all approved. So it's a matter of us doing some edits to it and finalizing and sending it back to them, and it should be a quick review and approval when we can get that out for bid. Going back to the, the project I submitted for the generators for the fire stations and the solar generators, in fact, I just got an email from FEMA folks, and they said it's under technical review this month, and they should be completed this month, and they did say that because of the administrative changes, a lot of the review process has been slowed down a little bit more than it usually has been. The communications sites up at Brushy Mountain up in Glenwood, we're trying to put some communications equipment up there to improve the communications up there, because presently, there's probably really none up there, it's kind of a dead spot in the county, that whole part, Mule Creek, that part of the county is kind of dead. So we've got the SCC approved our UHF license, so I'm in the process of getting an intermod study done, which the study does it, it makes sure our new equipment up here doesn't interfere with any of the equipment already existing up there. And once that's approved, we should be able to put our equipment up there, and it would be linking the Brushy Mountain site with the cliff site, and it'll all be linked back down to dispatch. And that's, I think, all the update, the last update I had was on the, the grant for the public warning system. FEMA had some questions that I answered on the 21st, I gave them the information they needed, and I guess that's under technical review also. So hopefully, we'll get some, those be done this month, I'm hoping. If you have any questions, I'm open to answer any of them, hopefully.
Questions?
Mr. Sheldon. I have one question on the communications at Brushy Mountain. I'm, I'm assuming that also benefits our law enforcement in that area?
Yes. And they, like I said, we just got with the sheriff, what, two months ago, and we repeated all the radios, so they have quite the list of frequencies, all the, all the county frequencies. In fact, Catron County's, Luna County, Sierras, they have, they have quite, they got four different zones, and each zone is, has many different options in it, and just a matter of them, they couldn't get a hold of dispatch through the normal, the normal channel up there, it comes out of Bill Evans, they could just switch over to the county fires, to that area up there. There should be no problem with the communication.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next is the report from, as y'all had before you, the, their reports from the code enforcement for the month. It's kind of self-explanatory, breaks it down, there was four new citations issued for April, and eight awaiting court dates. Total court dates are five, and the pending court dates are six, and you can see the results of the five, the five court dates we have, and, and the same thing usually happens time and time again, is the judge will give them 30 days to correct the problem, or a 30-day extension, then we'll go back again, and probably give them another 30 days. Eventually, there'll be some resolution to it. Any questions about any of the court dates?
Just one question on this report for me, Scott, is the, what's the difference between pending court dates, six, and eight citations awaiting court dates?
She is, I think she's, she's given the citations to, to the courts, and I guess they're waiting to assign, assign a court date, notify everybody of the, of the court dates, and I guess the pending court dates, I mean, she has, I think, dates set up for those, probably in May, I think, that have already been assigned. But the eights, the eight awaiting, there's been no court date assigned, but the six, she already has, I think, May court dates for those. In fact, she has one this morning with the gentleman with the trailer park out there on, on 90, it's been sitting there for 10 or 20 years vacant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to detention center, Mr. Joseph.
We currently are fully staffed at detention center. We do have five officers in training, so we're fully staffed, and hopefully we stay that way for quite a while. We do have an officer out that's a non-work-related injury, and then we do have another officer that probably serves in the National Guard, and actually, he's preparing to get deployed overseas for approximately a year and a half, so we wish him well, and we're going to miss him. Accreditation update, I'm going to report that we are starting that shower project, it was this big project that should be completed within a month and a half, maybe two months. So during that time, we are going to move some inmates, so I think that's a very good opportunity to really dig in deep to our accreditation, and start using power DMS to complete our uploads of our standards, and finish reviewing our policies and changing our procedures, and prepare for that mock audit this summer. On April 30th of 2025, our population was 80 detainees with an average population of 80. April 30th of 2025, our population was 80 detainees, with an average population of April of 88. We have transferred some detainees out of the facility to begin our shower project this week. Our RISE program in April had 29 RISE participants, with 12 in the facility and 17 in the community. On your packet, I did attach that RISE quarterly report. And like I stated, we did begin the shower project this week. We are, we are cleaning up and preparing the female unit, the three female units, to prepare for that shower project. Then at a later date, we'll be working on those male units. We are also working with maintenance for that laundry project that we have set up also. We did receive a quote for the male unit control enclosure project. That's another huge project we're looking at. So we'll start looking at that with maintenance, county, and finance. We did get funding from the legislatures for that project. We are looking at some training with Doniana County for our special response team, which we've worked with them previously before. I'd also like to acknowledge that this week is correctional officer week. We celebrate the difficult job that our officers and our staff do do at the facility. We want to recognize the difficulty they do, and they're always there at work, working 12, 16-hour shifts, dealing with different situations. So this is the week we acknowledge them. And on Friday, we do have our annual celebration. So everybody within the county, chairman, commissioners, you're also invited. We do have a cookout for our staff on Friday. We start eating about 12:30. We've been growing this celebration every year. We do award supervisor of the year and officer of the year that the staff votes for it themselves. And we do have different raffles and drawings for all our staff. So all our staff do get something. And we just want to celebrate and, and acknowledge the hard work that our staff does. And we invite everybody out there this Friday, open to any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify. So when the shower project is happening, you will, the, some of the detainees will temporarily be moved to other facilities, and they'll come back after the shower's done?
Chairman Commissioners, yes, we have transferred the females for now. They're holding in Luna County. So we are going to do three pods at a time. Approximately turnaround is maybe two, two and a half weeks, depending if there's not any issues or problems. But we will, as we section it off and complete, they will be moved back into that section. They're going to complete that whole bathroom area from the floor to the ceiling. And I think the warranty is approximately, what, about 12, 15 years, Jason?
Commissioner Floty?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Gonzalez, just a quick question. I appreciate your report. But with the presentation earlier regarding the new courthouse, are you involved with these drawings and these plans with regards to the holding cells and the solid port and the specifics such as that?
Chairman Commissioners, no, not as of yet. I was going to give Joseph and see if we could review those. I do know that I kind of looked at the schematics, but I would like to make sure that the solid port is large enough for the transports. Usually on a typical Monday, the district court, we use, utilize two transport vans and a chase vehicle. So we need room for those vehicles. And also, we could, we could take anywhere between six to 15 to 18 inmates to district court on any given Monday. So that's a lot of inmates leaving the facility. We do have a lot of staff that we do send there for safety reasons. I think it'd be very excellent to have a solid port and a separate entrance, because one of the most difficult things, and one of the most dangerous things is when you leave the security of the facility out into the public. But the current courthouse situation is there's only one entrance, one elevator. So staff, public, and detainees are using the same elevator at courthouse. We work really well with the courthouse security currently, to make sure that it's a smooth transition, and we haven't had any issues. But I will get with Joseph and, and the district court and the county manager, and make sure we read those plans, and make sure that it's not only looking for future usage, but the growth of maybe the court schedule, and also, and of course, safety and security for the detainees, the staff, the public.
Well, I appreciate that. Like Commissioner Floty said, I, I know that a lot of times there's not very many jury trials. And you, you'd definitely be the one to answer a lot of the questions I think that Chairman Floty had with regards to number of trials and length the detainees are held there, how often you're, you're going. You know, Monday is obviously maybe different than Thursday, and Friday's definitely probably a lot slower than the rest of the week. But I, thank you for getting with Joseph. And I think you are not just a wealth of knowledge, but you are, I think, definitely required to be there and part of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Commissioners? Thank you. Thank you. Chairman Commissioners, everything. Our finance director, Ms. Montoya.
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners. As you know, we're still currently under our Tyler system reconfiguration. I sent you an email that shows parts of our successful moving forward on this program. We're currently still in the 26 preliminary budget process. The clear group process is a lot of that this year. We're also in the configuration of our Amplifon grant program. That's our grant tracking system that we should be going live in around July with that. Our FY 2024 audit presentation, our auditors will be presenting to you on Thursday, or they'll cover all of our 24 audit with you. We've been working with department heads and elected officials for our FY 26 budgets, and everything's been going pretty smoothly. I don't know if you've had any issues getting into the system, but I'd be glad to help you with any questions that you might have. We did transition over to Western Bank on May 1st. That's been a, also a project we've been working on for several months. And our new JP Morgan P cards will be here soon, that we're also getting away from Washington Federal and moving to JP Morgan. So you'll be seeing those. You'll be coming in to sign for your new P cards again. I left some key dates here for you at the beginning. Our fiscal year begins again in Ju, July 1st. We have our final budgets coming up, as long, as well as our preliminary final submission dates. We're projecting to have our whole Tyler reconfiguration go live with fixed assets and all modules. Hopefully, we'll be done with that in August. We hope to have our onsite auditors here in September, and we will have this audit wrapped up by November on time. No more late audits. We're still doing the day-to-days every day, and let that all stand for any questions.
Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Andrew. Just one question. With, you talked about the grants follow-up or tracking system. And I understand the county is, will be hiring a grants administrator, right? So that person would use that system to make sure all of our grants are like in good progress and tracking expenditures and such?
Chairman Commissioners, yes, that's correct. And this is not just a one-person user, multiple department heads that have grants, say, like the airports and Joseph and planning that, in the road departments. And we can all be a part of this system. But yes, that's the main part of the grants manager. We'll be using this program for now standalone until we're done with our reconfiguration with Tyler, and then they, they will configure to each other. And so they'll work together. But yes.
Okay. And do we know when that position will be posted?
I'm reviewing the jobs, job description currently, so it's on my desk. Ready to hold up.
Thank you.
Guess we're good, thank you. I don't see our fire chief, so IT, see IT director, Mr. Baca.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, Manager Webb. I have a few items on the IT director report, but I'd actually like to focus on just one. And that was the recent completion of migrating our primary database for our Eagle environment. This is all the data that the assessors collect, the clerks, the treasurers. We migrated that data off of our old server environment onto our new server environment. So from the IT perspective, that's a pretty big deal. And what I'd really like you to understand with this, the nature of this maintenance, are the implications. We're moving away from an old server environment that we were no longer allowed to continue maintaining from the security perspective. So even though we did our utmost to make sure that that was as current as we could possibly get it, we're now having the data sit and reside on a server infrastructure that will have regular, frequent updates provided by Microsoft, not only for the operating system itself, but also for the database environment. So there's two softwares that are in play here. The overall operating system, as we know, we're all familiar with Windows 10, Windows 11. It's the same logic for a server infrastructure, but we're able to now have our data reside on this operating system that is as current and the latest offering that Microsoft provides. So inherently, by just being there, Microsoft also provides regular, constant security updates. So there's that piece that's been taken care of. The database management software, it too is the latest offering that Microsoft provides. So the data for these three departments, which is so public-facing, is now residing in a much more up-to-date environment. And just the nature of this migration here, I'd personally like to thank our network administrator, Robert Hood, for working with our Tyler Technologies engineers in migrating this data from one area to another. It sounds straightforward, but this is some of the most complex work that we could be doing at the moment. And it went really well. Of course, there's always things to iron out when there's any type of maintenance like this. And we're working on those very things right now, as we speak, just ironing out a couple of details and making sure that the data is completely accessible by all the departments, public-facing, such as on our website, when people try to search for documents, things along those lines, that all of that is still up and available. So we're still working on those pieces here. But if anything, it's a, it's one of the larger efforts that we've had to go through lately. And what this means is, here in our administration building, all of our data is now sitting on our most up-to-date server infrastructure as well. So all of the old servers that our information was on, those have been shut down. So we don't have to worry about going through extended warranties on this old equipment. So we're able to move on from that and focus on the new equipment. We have one server left in our entire environment that we have to migrate, and that's over at the detention center. And we'll continue to coordinate that effort with the administration there. And once we have that done, all of the old infrastructure will be done. But yeah, definitely something to be proud of. And it's a definitely sigh of relief on, on our part within IT, knowing that the data is sitting in a different environment. So that's the primary thing that I wanted to emphasize right now. I stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Planning and Capital Projects Director, Mr. Joseph.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Just wanted to share a couple of exciting things with you. So of course, the big one being that the volunteer fire department, underground storage tanks, and members, that project's complete. So now that main station has a 40,000 gallon of water capacity, and the thunder grid station has a 30,000 gallon of water capacity. So they can fill their tanker trucks, their brush trucks, whatever they need to. There's actually a hydrant on-site at each of those sites. And then there's also a dry hydrant, so if they need to draft to fill those trucks. So in the event that they lost power completely, and the backup generators didn't work, they could still find a way to get water out of those tanks into their vehicles. And I also wanted to take a moment to acknowledge our fire chief, Roger Groves, and Chief Ed Powers. Working with them through this project was incredible. The passion that those guys had for their, for their jobs, for, for their careers, and the life safety aspect of that, it was pretty incredible. The county is very lucky to have those folks. So I learned a lot in that process, and it was great to collaborate with them. Of course, the North Hurley project is still underway. They're going to be paving at the end of this week and first part of the next. And so that project is still slated to be finished up that first week in June. The public safety building, of course, you guys heard the presentation on that. If there's any questions whatsoever, we'd be glad to answer those. You know, I know that there's a lot of moving components to that. There's, there's going to be a lot of questions. There's going to be ways that we're trying to make, of course, the detention center meet their needs, meet the needs of the courts and the staff there. So there are a lot of moving parts to that. So like I say, if there's any questions, you feel that there's something that's not being answered, please let, you know. The Colonia's projects for 2024, just a heads up, May 22nd, our next regular session, I'm going to be bringing some resolutions in front of you, so we can start spending that money, that money. It's going to be for, Bohannon Houston's going to be the first round of those. Those are the engineers on the project, so we're going to get them under contract, so they can start putting those projects up to bid. And then once a contractor is selected, we'll come back with another set of resolutions to have you approve, so we can actually begin construction. And then the one key event date we had, last week, we were down in Las Cruces, and we presented to the Colonia's board the phase three of the Arenas Valley project. So that would be picking up for this 2024 project ends, and then taking that all the way around to basically where the MISM goes. And with that, will stand for any questions?
I just have one question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Holgame, on the North Hurley project paving that's being wrapped up, there was a community member who brought up some concerns. Any, was there any improvements or, or issues that we were able to address his concerns?
I think there may have been some miscommunication in there at some point. But I had communicated with that gentleman, and we are putting up a guardrail on that corner. There was already a section of that that was slated for, but we're actually continuing to make that go a little further around. And some of that, you know, those elevations are a little deceptive when it's in a rough state. When we get down to those final grades, it's not as dramatic maybe as, as, as he thought they were. So, but either way, it's still a good safety measure. We're making sure we're getting that completed. We want to make sure the public is taking care of this.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to Public Works Director, Mr. Jason.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, have the facilities maintenance in front of you report. Under current projects, the admin building front protocol resurfacing is almost complete. We have one more slight color change to make to that for a final coat. We continuing to work at the cliff, baseball fields, on the bathrooms and irrigation repairs. Corey Caminos bus stop, we're in the planning phase for those. We're doing six new bus stops. Member Senior Center Gazebo Concrete Lab, you'll be able to see some pictures here in a minute. We're helping out with a beautification grant out there at that facility. The detention center painting continues. Along with, we have initiated the shower coating project. We're prepping for that company to come in right now currently, just getting that ready to go. The Baton Park concession bathrooms painting is continuing, along with the pavilion bathrooms painting. Under Future Projects, Conference Center hallway facelift, that's slated to, we're going to start ordering some stuff for that. Admin building employee-designated outdoor space in the back here. Detention Center training mock cell door installation. Also, admin building signage. Detention Center laundry remodel and replace, that's still in the works. And the structures that we're going to be replacing for the, the bus stops is at La Capia, Spring Street Park, Visitor Center, the New Rec Center, Knights of Columbus slash Commons Corner. Notable accomplishments, the urinal replacement at the Conference Center has been completed, and the courthouse main entrance slider doors total replacement has been completed. And I stand for any questions for facilities?
Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you for the report. One question about Baton Park. Is that, is that currently available for public rental? Or like, who's using that facility right now?
So Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Stevens, so it is not under, we do not rent it out right now. Usually, it's, for right now, if they have a baseball tournament or anything like that, we are continuing to rent that out right now. But we are working on some new policies moving forward, so we can get that in the queue to start renting out again.
Thank you.
In addition to that, we're also pursuing some long-term lease tenants as a possible option for that building as well.
Thank you, Jason.
Okay, moving on to County Fleet. So the month of March, we had 15 oil changes and inspections, one air conditioner recharge, one blade had the cutting edges replaced and the brass sleeves. one blade had the cutting edges replaced and the brass sleeves replaced, 11 units had tires repaired or replaced. There's the breakdown there of three repaired and eight replaced, three wheel alignments, one set of struts, five complete brake jobs, three batteries replaced, two alternators replaced, and one window regulator. Under projects out there, we got the new fuel cards replaced in the road and fleet department vehicles. And I stand for any questions? Okay. Moving on to the Road Department. So under current finished projects, so due to limited manpower and equipment operators have been prioritizing...
Hold on. Did you want to?
Sorry.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
I was just going to let the commission know that we do have a new road director. I emailed you, Mr. Mike Rocco started last week, and him and Sean Carrasco, our road supervisor, in the field today. And so in front of you is the, just a snapshot of some of the work they've currently been doing. Still working on a very large low water crossing in McDonald in the southern portion of the county. And as you receive complaints from your constituents around conditions of the roads, we are several equipment operators down. They will be conducting those interviews next week, two weeks. So hopefully, we can get some staff hired and get back to more routine maintenance. A little bit of rain would help with that as well. So hopefully, I will have them both here next meeting so that you can meet both of them. I know Sean's been doing a lot of work behind the scenes, along with Jason's assistants holding the road department together for the last several months. So they'll be here next month.
Really, I don't know the process, but you know, Mike Rocco is a very good person, very intelligent, knows a lot about equipments, very good, very good individual. I'm glad he's part of our county now. Thank you, County Managers.
So the road superintendent, who was the other one?
Sean Carrasco. So we have a road director, which in statute says road superintendent, we call them road directors now, but so that is Mike Rocco. Sean Carrasco is our road supervisor, who does most of the supervising of the staffing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jason, I don't know if you had anything else on the road department.
Mr. Chairman, that pretty much sums it up. The pictures are there for you to view. Low water crossings.
Thank you. Commissioner Medina?
Comment, either county manager or Jason. When we discussed with CAT regarding the new blades, they had talked about a program where the supervisors would have the ability to monitor the use of the equipment. Being down, are they maximizing staff hours to make sure that, I mean, we're used to eight and we're only working with two, are they maximizing off that data they got?
So I had a conversation, a brief conversation with Mike Machambo at the end of last week, and we're talking about making sure that we have full functionality. Both of them need to be the ones that have full access to that. So they are reaching out to our rep with CAT, with Wagner, to make sure that it's doing all the things, that we're getting all of the bells and whistles that we pay for. But yes, they do have the ability to monitor exactly where those blades are operating, how many miles a day they're getting. It looks at fuel usage, it looks at idling, all of those things, has that capability. Sean's been quizzing me about productivity of, and what I'm accustomed to seeing in other counties I've worked in. Of course, there's a lot of variability to that, but looking at, you know, what is a sufficient number of miles they should be getting. And so he's been doing an excellent job of really diving into that data and making sure that we are holding staff accountable and that we are producing the maximum amount that we can produce, and really keeping, trying to tighten up on that.
I just want to make sure, if we're that short-staffed, I want to make sure those units are moving for the good of the department. Thank you.
You know, one, just a comment for me. I look at the county fleet maintenance report here, and you know, you see 15 oil changes, one air. I really appreciate that department taking on a lot of the work. I don't know, and I don't want to know, how much money that has saved our taxpayers for the work staying in-house, so I really appreciate that. Tom, thank you, and I hope it continues. They do save us money, and I hope we replace some of the lift and some of the equipment, which is well-deserved and for safety purposes, and to complete some of this stuff. So I really appreciate that, that you guys are doing that, and I hope it continues. And you know, I understand supporting businesses, but when you deal with county or taxpayer money, you have to be real careful. You know, and I don't know where we get the gas, but I know that when I, the former commissioner that was here, the Republican, we'd always talk to you about getting our gas locally and helping these, our small community, but I appreciate what you guys are doing. Thank you. County Manager.
I don't have a formal report on your screen, but I wanted to give you an update on the conversations that we have had with the state in regards to the status of our senior services. So had a series of conversations. Alex Brown and myself are meeting with Neil Sagata, he's the director of Non-Maturo AAA this afternoon, to talk about what they've discovered as possible solutions to make sure that there is no disruption of services for our seniors. They are very in tune with, I've shared with them that your concern is that we cannot have them go without, and so they're working very diligently to help us come up with a solution. So as soon as I am off of that meeting and I have some more information, I'll make sure to provide you an update.
You know, and I appreciate for you looking into that, but you know, and we heard public input earlier from our public, one of our former commissioners, but what I'm really struggling with right now is we have Mimbres, and we have Cliff Hila Centers, and I don't know how much attention our commissioners have paid to this, but you know, I understand HMS is a 501(c)(3), and that's good. We do need, you know, Grand County does need their services, but what I'm struggling with is the figures that we got from Mr. Otero says it's $102,000 in salaries for the Hila Center. Then he throws $115,000 in salaries for the Mimbres Center. You know, I looked at a couple of things too, and so that's about $218,000, a little more than $218,000 in salaries for senior centers. I don't know what their staffing is, I think that's probably our next question. You know, one of the emails and something that I saw is, well, you know, we're 501(c), we don't have to tell you about, well, to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, county manager, but anytime you're accepting state or federal money, taxpayer money, I think that opens you up to, yes, you do need to let us know what's going on. Did a little further digging, and Santa Clara had, I think in their payroll for their senior center was $153,000. That's not including $33,000 for benefits. I don't know if those figures are correct, but that's what I ended up getting. So if you're looking at our salaries for our senior centers, we're looking at close, or maybe a little over, about $400,000 just in salaries for seniors, but yet, our senior centers are struggling. You know, what's, you know, to me, since day one, when I sat up here as a commissioner, seniors, kids, and veterans are the ones that I'm going to sit up here and advocate for us. And yes, I say it, you know, all of us in between, you know, mental health, the other one, all of us in between all this, you know, we can scratch cloud, do what we need to do to do this, but when this is happening and you have close to $400,000, over $400,000, and then all of a sudden, it seems like senior centers are coming back to us, I do have some questions, and it doesn't sit well with me, because those are our seniors. Now, if I saw a big old staff, I see this, maybe I'm wrong, maybe they're going to be proving that wrong to me. But I think that our commissioners for now need to sit back, think about, what's our next step? You know, and we can bring it up, and the reason I bring that up with the report is because I'm a little concerned, and I appreciate what our county manager's doing, so there is no break in service, but at the end of the day, somebody owes us some answers, whether it's our state auditor, somebody, I don't know, think about it. Somebody owes us some answers on some of this, and there has to be something else going on with this, so we need to look at it. I appreciate for you, and I thank you, and those figures are there, so think about it. Thank you, County Manager. Anything else, commissioners, or county manager questions? Okay, moving on. It's all yours.
Commissioners, for your agenda on Thursday. If you recall, every 30 days, we can, we have, we'll have a public hearing and consider the proclamation declaring extreme respiratory drought conditions, imposing the fireworks restrictions. You have that on your agenda again. I failed to include the drought monitor for the state, but three-quarters or more of our county still remains in exceptional drought conditions. We're very blessed with a little bit of rain, hopefully we'll get some more today, but that's not going to change those conditions anytime soon. So it is a staff's recommendation that we continue imposing those restrictions. Also, under proclamations, you have proclamation for a National Emergency Medical Services Week, National Nurses Week, and National Hospital Week that Commissioner Medina has placed on the agenda. Do you want to speak to any of those?
It says recognition for the three services that are provided by individual medical centers, and I think they just deserve that recognition. Thank you.
You know, the only thing I want to say is on the proclamation for fireworks, please don't forget, Sheriff, to try to keep those stats to help us for future years, please. Thank you.
He's...
Thank you. Sorry.
I think he responded to, well, no, that was on the fire restrictions, so never mind. Presentations, as Andrea mentioned in her report, Farley Van Ar with Hinkle and Landers, our audit firm, will be presenting the fiscal year '24 financial audit. You have your regular report from Robert Whitaker with Hila Regional. You have your minutes and consent agenda under new business. Kim is here to talk about purchases of some new transit buses and a side entry minivan. Kim?
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. I'm asking for three 14-passenger buses with two wheelchair positions each. These buses are $132,000 and change each. These will all be replacements for existing units. We will be replacing one 2013 bus has over 200,000 miles with an inoperable, unreparable wheelchair lift. Another 2013 has 289,000 miles with an inoperable, unreparable wheelchair lift. And the third replacement is for a 2015 with a plethora of electrical issues, we're constantly having to have this bus in for repairs because we can't get it out of park, the doors won't open, the ramp won't deploy. That one has 192,000 miles. The minivan is $68,800, has two wheelchair positions, and we will be replacing a 2004 Chevy Cavalier with 209,000 miles and a 2009 Dodge minivan with 213,000 miles. We will be purchasing these buses from Creative Bus Sales Model 1 out of Albuquerque, and we are piggybacking off of a New Mexico, sorry, Oklahoma State price contract, and the reason for that is there has been some challenges and delays with New Mexico DOT renewing our state price contract, so we have been able to piggyback off of the Oklahoma State Price Contract.
So what happens to the vans that are being replaced? Where do they go?
We auction them.
Auction them?
And these are all ground funded, but because these purchases are over my authority, we'll be bringing these to you for your approval, but they are contained within her ground funding.
That's right, good. So is that going to be an action we take on Thursday?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then, these are for, these come under our budget, though they're in a grant for the fiscal year '24?
They're in her current grant, which is in our current operating budget, but these says a 300, I mean, we're asking for close to half a million dollars in buses. You need to approve these purchases.
And, but is it for the prior fiscal year, or is it for the fiscal year '26 that we're working on?
No, it's our current fiscal year.
You got to remember, her fiscal year is October, right? October is to the end of September?
October 1st to September 30th.
Because it's a federal.
It's a federal.
She's the only one of our departments that works on a federal fiscal year because her funding is federal.
Okay, thank you. And just to make sure me and the public understand, these are budgeted. Okay, thank you.
Just a quick question about, is there, or what effort has been made to make sure that the new vehicles are fuel efficient?
So currently, we have looked at electric vehicles and other types, propane fuel. I have worked with other transit agencies that are currently using them, and we're finding that the technology just isn't quite there yet. The repair costs are astronomical, and having local facilities that are able to repair them, a lot of us would have to go to Albuquerque for repairs, so it's just not feasible for us yet.
Thank you for looking into it.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Next, item M is for your approval of the donation of a transportation van to Fort Baird Medical Center. So the county has had a handicap-accessible transportation van that was allocated for, through capital outlay, for transportation for veterans. We struggled for a number of years to find a suitable home and/or someone to use that in an appropriate manner. We were contacted by individuals at Fort Baird Medical Center who can use the van. They've looked at it, they're extremely excited to be able to put that to use to help with transportation services for the veterans in their facility, and that letter was attached, so that would be for your consideration. Questions? And we did check the original scope, it is, as long as it is being used to transport veterans, we are not, we're staying in compliance with the ground funding.
So what was the original purpose, or was it for Cory Caminos, or was it for a different?
The original purpose was for, let me tell, or if I'm right, or go ahead.
No, go ahead.
The original purpose of that was for Veterans Court, through the district attorney's office, right? And, well, that didn't go very far.
Well, so it went back a little further than that, and so when Rebecca Dow was in office the first time, she allocated capital outlay dollars because in her position, she was hearing from all the counties within her district that there was a lack of transportation options for veterans to get them to and from their appointments. So she allocated funding for a van to provide transportation services. We did not have the staff to provide services there, so it was a challenge to find an agency to be able to use the van, for us to use the van. So during that timeframe, as the chairman mentioned, then the Veterans Court program came about in district court, then it was in the DA's office, it flipped back and forth. So we had transferred the van for their use to be able to use for that program, to help them with transporting the veterans within that program to various appointments. And as the chairman mentioned, that didn't work either. So I believe this is a very suitable use for that van. It is a government-to-government transfer, and they will... It is a government-to-government transfer, and they will, I think they have forty residents that are veterans, and they will utilize this van to be able to make those trips wherever they might need to go. It's, it's been a long process, and I think the van has five hundred miles on it or something. It's, it's still brand new, so.
So maybe I should have asked this while Denise was still up, but... Are our veterans utilizing the services provided to get to their appointments? I mean, I have a couple that call me and ask for rides, and for some reason, they're unfamiliar with, and I'm just curious how have we, are we servicing them to get to appointments through Coricaminos now? Is that the best way?
So we looked at utilizing this van, van through Coricaminos, but we are being funded as public transit, not specifically for veterans, so it really was not a good mix. I don't know if Kim has a way of tracking that her ridership is, what percentage it is of veterans, but it is public transit. They can use that at any time. And then, as she mentioned last month, there is the option for on-demand, where they can call and make an appointment. As long as we have the staff, we're able to do that for them as well.
If you remember, the conversation we had is, ask for ideas, because a lot of our seniors and a lot of our, our veterans are, don't have transportation to make those appointments. And that's what I, in talk to Ms. Luminas last meeting about, trying to expand more into the mining district, because we're really struggling with, with that. And the, I get, last week, I get calls that certain people couldn't get to their appointments because they didn't have it. Like our County Manager said, our, go to Caminos is more public, so those are things we, you know, need to also work on and come up with ideas of how we're going to help, or what we can do.
And I would, I would mention, as we're talking about the failure of senior services all around, our county has not done a good job of the transportation piece of senior services, so, you know, we can offer, in addition to meals, congregant, and home delivered, we should be providing transportation services as well, and they could also take advantage of that. But that has not been working well here either. So hopefully, with a new provider, that, that will be another, another option, is utilizing transportation services that are provided through AAA.
I just wanted to throw in there, too, that we need to remember and hold accountable the managed care organizations, because if people do have Medicaid, then they are entitled to transportation, so we need to make sure they're part of the mix. If we do some sort of education campaign, you know, with flyers or radio or whatever about, like, here are your options for transportation, I think it would be good to include that.
Can the Health Council take that on, something like that, advertisement?
I'm sure they could do a campaign. I'll, I'll talk to Emma about it.
Thank you. Anything else on this?
Sorry, I was running minutes. Andrea will go over the first draft of the fiscal year 26 prelim budget, which was sent out to you.
Chairman Commissioners, again, if you have any questions or you need any assistance with the ClearGov, I'd be glad to give you a one-on-one training or anything you would like to see. Just let me know.
So can you go through, just explain to them what you explained in the email, and just summarize what is on the Excel spreadsheet, just so that they understand how the basics of, we have beginning cash and all of those things.
Commissioner Stevens, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, if you have any tips for, like...
In your ideal world, what you would like us to come with on Thursday, you know, if, if you were to tell us one-on-one how to go through that document and think about it and make notes or suggestions, I mean, we can do that on our own, too, but if you have any suggestions, I think that would be helpful.
Okay. Definitely. I know it's going to be a little confusing for you guys because you don't know our chart of accounts, you know, general fund this and departments, and so I know that poses a little bit of confusion on your end because it's a lot at one time. But this is the spreadsheet that you did see, that I sent to you on Friday. These are the estimated cash balances. That was as of Friday. This will fluctuate. These are our cash balances. That will be updated all the way till July 1st, basically. We have our budgeted revenues. This is what we expect to come in through our general fund, is twenty million eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. And our budgeted expenditures are the fifteen million fifty-five thousand ninety-three dollars. So within that, we do our budgeted transfers for the county road, the correction and the airports. So you, you'll see that our transfers net to zero, but the general fund is the one that takes up the money. They pick up the differences for those funds. So for now, you have the main funds on here, but by the time we're done with this process, this whole spreadsheet will be filled out for you, and you'll have a, a full picture of everything. This is mainly if you have any questions about our four main funds. And we do have the local reserves. Those are requirement. We have to have those. It's one-twelfth of our general fund for these, and then for the road.
Three-twelve.
Sorry. Yes. But you'll see the eighty thousand dollar budgeted transfer for intergovernmental grants. That's our match portion for Coricaminos, so that's already on there. There's so many moving parts that this will be updated constantly. This does not include any salary projections that you are discussing, discussing with Charlene, and...
So this was the first tab, and the reason that you're only seeing what we consider major funds, the general fund, county road fund, and corrections, as well as the airport, is the rest of these are either GRT-generated, money goes in and out, they're grant-funded, money goes in and out. So we focus on those four major funds, because those are typically funds that you're going to see the transfers out of the general fund, because we don't, we never generate enough money for the county road fund, we never generate enough money in corrections. So we make those budgeted transfers that Andrea talked about, and so you will see a significant amount that comes out of the general fund that hits those other funds. So that's why the majority of this is blank, is because most of these are, for instance, fire protection is state-funded, LEPF is state-funded, lodgers' tax is in and out. So we don't focus on those initially. We want you to make sure that you can see that, you know, we're meeting the reserve requirements, and that is something that's required by Department of Finance and Administration, and they do that in the event that your county is struggling financially. They want to make sure that at least you have three months to operate out of your general fund. You can see that we're well above, above that. What this doesn't contain, you will have a few more transfers. They'll be insignificant amounts. These are the major ones. That's why we're looking at those today. What I have not put in here is, I'm still working with Michelle on, on what is the best way to move forward with looking at salary increases. And so we're still playing with some of those figures. I will have, by the time you see this on Thursday, I will talk to you about what that looks like, and we will include that figure in there. Just trying to make sure that we are moving people through the pay scale, trying to keep up with the changing environment around law enforcement, detention. We've talked significantly about that, and what is the right amount to bring those individuals. So hopefully, we can continue to have Joseph stand in front of us and say we're fully staffed, which that doesn't happen very often. So that is a piece that's still, still missing out of this that we'll have in there. But overall, to look at these four major funds and, and see it in the shape it is, grocery seats tax, since grocery seats tax reform took place, we're seeing that grocery seats is actually now, based, last year surpassed property tax revenue. It used to be the other way around. Another thing to note, as we talk about the grants, we are managing over eleven million dollars of grants. That's quite a bit, and with no dedicated staff for that. So we're very fortunate that our GRT is slowly increasing. It's been very consistently increasing. We're not seeing the cyclic ups and downs that we historically saw here. So actually, we're in, we're looking right now to be in pretty good shape. And this also includes all of the, all of the items that were, that the staff and elected officials submitted to you. I've asked for some further information from several of the departments. The amount of capital that was requested was much higher than what we typically see, so I'm asking them for additional information, just to be able to pass on to you, so you know that we're making sound decisions as we invest in capital.
So for me, I guess I'm, you know, old school is, or dummies, the other word, but, you know, what I'd really like to see, and I'm more of a paper kind of guy, because I struggle getting on that, is I'd like to see if, what departments are increasing in the funding and why? And some of the capital that they asked for is, what are we going to approve? Because right now, where it says, and I'm assuming it's under, you know, wherever it is, preliminary budget, sounds like an action item to me. I'm not going to feel comfortable voting until I see exactly on our preliminary budget. This line item is going, say, for example, from ten dollars to fifteen dollars because we're going to purchase capital equipment that Jason asked for. And those are the things I want, I want to see what, what other funding we're approving. And I understand the three twelfths, I understand all that piece, but, you know, what are we looking at? What are we going to give our employees? What's there? And, and I'm eating my words, because if you remember a few years back, I said, well, it doesn't matter if we understand a lot of the systems that they use, it's for them to use. But now I'm saying, like, well, it's a great system for you guys, but I'm learning it, and I have a couple of days to decide what budget goes, what's a preliminary budget, right?
So we're, we're, we're not going to ask you to vote on this on Thursday. We have put it on every agenda so that it can be discussed, so we're going to ask for you to vote on this at the end of May. That's when you will be approving the preliminary budget. And, and one thing to remember, too, is although it's always my goal, and I, I push the staff pretty hard to make sure we're as close as we possibly can be on the prelim budget, so remember that the budget is a two-part process. So we have the prelim budget, which goes in at the end of May, and that is what DFA approves to begin the fiscal year in July, so that gives you room to operate. You will then, we will then come back, and you will approve the final budget, which becomes our final operating budget for the entire year. In that final budget process, between prelim approval from DFA to the final budget process, we will have, by then, we've closed out the fiscal year, you will have the actual beginning cash balances, not, not an estimation on or based on where your-to-date calculations as the prelim is. So we've closed out our fiscal year. We have those actual numbers to put in. If there's anything that we want to make changes, we still can make changes from that prelim to that final. After the final budget is approved, then that's when, if we make any changes, then you're going to see the bars. And we hope that we're not coming back to you next year like we have this year with as many bars. So we tried really hard to get it as close as we can during the prelim part, and so it's just minor tweaks between prelim and final. But if you have a ton of heartache between preliminary and final, I mean, we can definitely overhaul it again. But just know that we work really hard to get it as close as we can at this point.
Thank you.
I have one other question. We're supposed to be able to see that same budget up here on ClearGov, correct?
Correct.
But when I look at ClearGov, there's, the revenue is way larger than the twenty million that you just showed, so it's confusing. So maybe I need that remedial training you're offering. I don't know if that's a combination of the last five years or what.
That's, that's all funds wrapped together, and so that's why we focus on this, and that's why I asked them to present you with this spreadsheet. And so rather than having, what's happened in the past is we've had three or four different versions of spreadsheets floating around, errors are made, so we invested in ClearGov so that the department heads can go in, drop their information in, you can look at it in detail, line item by line item. And there is a way, and I'm not very savvy at it either, so don't feel bad. So Andrea can help you by, you can look to see, like, what's in the general fund, what's in the road fund, and it's just a matter of, of learning how to navigate it. But that gives you all the details, so you can see exactly what's rolled up into these figures. And so that's why we present this little summary sheet, so you can see just a snapshot of what each of those major funds looks like. Because, yeah, that's a little confusing when you look at, what is it, eighty million or something like that?
That's all my questions. Thanks.
Good. Go ahead.
Next, we have a mutual aid agreement between Gratt and Luna County. Scott's been working on this. This is nearly this identical language of the mutual aid agreement that we, that you approved between Gratt County and Sierra County, other than they don't have EMS. The EMS is private in Luna County, so this will provide another updated mutual aid agreement between Gratt and Luna County. Questions? Anything you want to add? Next, moving on to resolutions, we have Resolution R-25-30, Budget Adjustment Request. Andrea?
Chairman and Commissioners, before you, you have a bar. I need to let you know that I needed, I need to correct for Thursday on the EWPP. It's for the eighty thousand dollar increase of this same grant. It's a, it's the same grant over and over, but it's eighty thousand, and so I'll have that edited for you for Thursday. That was my error. The fifteen thousand two hundred and ninety-eight sixty-seven, that is for the new stove emergency funding for the Nevers Center. That's coming from Aging and Long-Term Services. They granted that just last week. And then the rest is the airport grant for their runway and taxiway construction. And I'll start for any questions.
Please not.
So just to clarify, the EWP program is pretty confusing, so all we're doing is asking you to, we're allocating an additional eighty thousand that they provided, which is called for technical assistance dollars. It's a hundred percent reimbursable, so we just have to increase the budget by that eighty that MRCS provided. Any other questions on the bar? Next is Resolution R-2531, a resolution to accept the fiscal year 24 audit findings.
Chairman Commissioners, again, this will be the resolution that you will have to, well, that will be before you for acceptance after the auditors present your FY24 audit.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, that concludes your agenda for Thursday.
Okay, moving on to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Medina? Commissioner Flores?
No, sir.
Commissioner Sheldon?
I don't have a report today. Thank you.
Commissioner Stevens?
I just wanted to report that I met with County Manager Webb, and we talked about the animal control ordinance, and it's good news that in the last legislative session, HB 113, which is Animal Welfare Act passed, and it's now law, and what that does is it opens up funding opportunities for municipalities and animal shelters. And so hopefully, there's a way we can utilize some of those funds to improve services at our, our local shelters and also support spay and neuter programs. And then, of course, part of the reason why we are looking at that ordinance And then of course, part of the reason why we were looking at that ordinance was some constituents had requested higher fees or penalties and also the addition of PFO to the, the dogs and cats. So I just wanted to report progress on that. And we'll be submitting some proposed changes for review with the attorney is our next step. And I also continue conversation with the Wind Canyon folks and they just let me know they still get a lot of flat tires, there's a lot of metal in the road. And I think that's because when construction trucks are driving, things bounce out of the back. So I was hoping there was some clever invention with like a magnet that you could drive and would pick all those up, but I don't know if such a thing exists. It does? Okay. So that would be cool. And they know that it won't be until the next budget that, you know, maybe they get some new material out there on that Camino de Viento. And regarding HMS, I've been thinking about what former Commissioner Edwards said in public comment about how the two big questions are, how can we use our role as commissioners to help identify the problem for the turnover and the, the problems with service provision? And what can we do about it? So I think a conversation with the board is in order to try to, to identify those answers. And I know there are some things in progress already, but just, I, I do think it's important. It seems to be, it's come to a, with a, some of their leadership, well, well, two, two primary leaders in the organization have left now. So it's becoming critical that we do something. And that's all I have for my report.
Can I loop background?
No. Yeah, go ahead. You know that, you can't.
This manager, so you talk, you and Andrea have been talking about budgets and preliminary budgets and so forth, and this is the first time you guys talk about raises. Are we including raises for non-union employees? There is going to be something to look at. I've got a couple of concerns. I've been looking at some of the stuff on New Mexico counties and so forth, and the cost of a county manager is going up significantly. I cannot believe, I mean, we're hiring some people that have zero, zero experience and they're coming in in the 160, 170,000 dollar range and that's alarming. When you have somebody that has no experience with what they're doing. So if you can just kind of put that in the preliminary budget as well, I'd just really like to take a look and see how it's going to impact the budget overall. Please, thank you. That's all I got. I won't come back.
There's nothing left to come back on. Close it out. You know, two things, and I don't know, it's, I might have missed the headline, but you know, I can't, sometimes as a commissioner, even as a chair, you can't take action on your own. But there was a letter to support Western New Mexico with one of their grants. So it has to do, sending a letter, it's already written, I've been meaning to send it to staff to put it on letterhead, but off the top of my head, I can't think of what it is. So, and maybe I can find it real quick, but if I can't, but, and I don't even know if I'm doing this right, Charlene, but asking for- So what it is, is they're applying for Congressional Direct Spending Grant to Continue Construction of the New Mexico Center of Excellence for Early Childhood Education. So they wanted a letter of support from me to do that. It goes up to, I believe, Senator Ben Ray Lujan. So is it okay to ask you guys if I go ahead and sign that letter and send it off to them to support that?
Okay. Yeah, it's all right.
Okay. Just to make sure I don't, yeah, anyway. The other part to this is I, I know you guys heard my comment and I appreciate Commissioner Stevens, what she said, but you know, I think it is time. I understand that commissioners have certain roles and we learned a lot of those roles as commissioners when it came to the hospital and we appointed a board of trustees. I understand HMS is their own entity, but at the end of the days, you know, what we've talked about, or what I talked about here is we really need to put some thoughts and maybe Thursday I can give some input as what direction our commission can do. But bad part is, I don't want to put you guys in the spot, but I know exactly what, where I might be headed with this. And I'm going to leave it at that right now. But you know, Commissioner Stevens is right. It's probably time to have those conversations. And those conversations need to be done in public, which I'm fine with. And, but we really need to think, especially with, with what's happening with our senior centers. So I'd really appreciate that if you commissioners, and I'll bring it up Thursday, put some thoughts as to what direction we can head as a commission. It might not mean much when a commission goes to a different board and talks about, you know, certain things that are happening. You know, some of the funding, you know, some of our representative, our representative and our senator, they're not at fault for, for some of this stuff. You know, they're not, you know, and I don't like that. So maybe it is time for Grant County Commission to, to throw it out there. And maybe I will put somebody in a bad spot, but that's fine. We'll live and we'll get through it and see what directions we head. And you know, our county manager can brief us on more conversations that she has, but I'm not real happy at the moment with the way our senior centers are, were going. You know, and before you guys became commissioners and this is public and it sits there, and it's there in our meeting where we asked for capital, the ICIP plan from them. And it was a plan that was submitted to us, had a van that had already been purchased. It was, looks like just the date was changed on it. You know, that right there raised some red flags as what are we doing? You know, are we just signing off things that start with different dates? And there's other things that I'm not going to get into, but I'd really like for you guys to really sincerely think about what actions we can take and move on from there to support our seniors and not only that, support our community. That's all I have on this. Somebody else thought of something else? No? Meeting adjourned.